Have we heard from Mike?
No, he called me after the last meeting and said he had this for that show, but no. We're not going to call from him.
You all set?
We're set.
The time being, 7:00, open the May 5th meeting of the zoning board adjustment. I'm Dick Lewis. Introduction. Neil MacGyver.
Dick Piper.
Bill Clark.
Robin Peters.
Howard Burnham.
Freeman Plummer.
First order of business, nominations and appointment of officers for chair and vice chair. Any volunteers, any nominations?
How long will it take, Louis?
I'll second that.
Any other nominations for chair? No. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstaining? All abstaining. Vice chair.
I nominate Bill Clark.
Second. Any other nominations?
You will accept the course.
For more hearings. Any discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstaining?
Abstaining.
Okay. Second order of business, adoption of April 7 minutes.
Oh, wait, one point of order. If you can pick one of the alternates to sit in for my conference.
Rob, just right there. So you'll be sitting on this. Any deletions, additions, or other corrections to the April 7 minutes?
One correction. I'm stating of personnel, you have Mr. Plummer and Mr. Freeman, I believe. One.
I believe that's the same.
He did Mr. Freeman, Plummer.
Yeah. You see that?
Yep.
Oh, look at we did that two for one.
Let's see. Mike wasn't there. Actually, you were a few minutes late, I think.
April?
Yes. Yeah. So it probably should be maybe Mr.
Was it Rob? Robin, were you seated for a little bit or? I don't remember. Okay. Well, we did have recently.
She was here for hours.
Oh, okay, so maybe.
I was.
Yeah, you were a little late, so we seated two people. Maybe it was Freeman and Robin.
Yeah. So we'll make that correction. Any other revisions? Your motion to accept as amended?
It must be because Ms. Peters seconded the motion, so.
Yep. So a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Correspondents, local officials, workshop floor area. Everybody got a copy of that? If people wanted to sign up, they should just contact you.
Correct. Correct. Just kind of taking, there's a whole bunch of those. Oh, also I had something to add. For on the agenda. But we did get, a motion was filed for an extension of the briefing schedule considering, concerning the bachelor of Lowe's case. So now it has been rescheduled to June 30th for the bachelors to file and August 3rd for the town to file. So it's been postponed another month.
Isn't that reverse of what it was before?
Before it was May and June, and so now it's June and August.
Then the town had to file the briefs first and then bachelor.
Originally, it must be found on the opposing briefs. No, I think it was the same order. It's just that it was May and June and now it's June and August. So it's, the, one of the attorneys requested that there be a delay and it was granted.
Has counsel indicated when oral arguments might be on there?
No, because they have to file the briefs first and then they set that date, so.
Could be late this year or early next year or something.
Oh, I hope in just, I hope in just a couple of months after.
Okay. All right. New business, signed variance at 12 Eaton Road, PID 213024, Joseph Menthie of Nationwide Aircraft Sales in E.A., and cultural loan. Two variants, one for square footage of one side of the sign and one for square footage of the total side. Is there someone here to speak on behalf of the application?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'm Joe Menthie and president of Nationwide Aircraft Sales and the developer of the Plymouth Commons Park. Let me give you a little history of how we got here. We started this development about two years ago. And as we developed it, was always a question how we were going to rent and what type of businesses we're going to rent this area. And what size units that we're going to be used. And we started the smallest unit at 1,500 square feet, moving up in maybe 1,500. And we ended up renting most of them at 1,500. And as we had the tenants move in, one of the problems we ended up with was signage. We put a temporary sign up to see how we were going to rent these units and how big the sign was going to be needed in the site. The planning board approved three buildings there. A, a building is on the corner which is not up yet, which is less than 8,000 square feet. The two buildings that are up, building B and C are 12,000 square foot buildings. And we ended up renting mostly the 1,500 square foot units. And we did put the temporary sign up because of course, as a developer, we would love to rent the 6,000 square foot units or 3,000. The cost of the units would be less for plumbing and electrical and the sign would have been smaller. But as we rented, it was to retail, number one. Number two, it was the smaller unit and we were getting the local people in, starting their first time business and sometimes second location, third location. And I got a call from my son saying that the town came down and they didn't like all these temporary signs that started to pop up with the tenants. It was one thing when they opened, but it ended up, they were there and there was people left there. And the complaint we got from the tenants is the signage we had up, the big sign, wasn't going to make it. So we, we tried to design a sign. We got a local sign company and we ended up what we ended up with. Now, for the board information, that sign services two buildings, 24,000 square feet. The third building, which is A, that will be put up, will have its own signage on the building. And we hope that's a one tenant building, no more than two. And that building is anywhere from, and I say this because things change, but it was approved from the planning board at 7,800 square feet. And I think it's going to be a little less than that because of parking requirements. So I'm here tonight to see if I can get a variance approved of that sign. And if there's any questions, I'll try to answer.
Questions?
Was there a sign on the original site plan?
Yes.
From the planning board? And that's the one, that's the temporary sign that you put up?
Yeah, the temporary sign was what we put up. And it had a little roof on it, okay? And I just didn't know how it looked, but as I said, it was temporary, so I didn't, I really didn't want to get into the permanent signage until we had most of it rented. But I saw that there was complaints and at this time, at this type of economy, I couldn't lose anybody. So I had to, I had to play the situation and get that permanent sign done as fast as possible.
There's in your packet, it shows you what the original sign was here. And this means our sign ordinance of 100 square feet. And then this is the sign that they put up now. But the problem with our zoning ordinance is that every business is allowed 100 square feet, regardless of it's one business or it's multiple. So he's trying to advertise for, let's say, 14 businesses if it's, you know, fully rented out. And yet he's, he's only allowed that 100 square feet. So what we did was, I brought this to the attention of the planning board and during town meeting, we put in an amendment so that when you have this situation that he has with a number of buildings and it's actually a shopping center, that they're given more than just that 100 square feet and they, to encourage them to do this directory sign. Because in theory, each one of the businesses is entitled to 100 square feet, but that would look ridiculous. And since this wasn't large enough, trying to meet that 100 square feet, which he's trying to comply, they put in those temporary signs, you know, the ones with the letters and it has the arrow flashing in, and those are just not permitted. So we were trying to work with the tenants and temporarily allow that until he could work that out. And then at the same time, we were trying to pass it through town meeting, which was in March. Now that amendment did pass. So from now on, it'll be taken care of as part of site plan review. That they'll say, this is going to be our directory sign, it is going to exceed the 100 square feet, but this is why and this is what it's all going to look like. So they do it as part of site plan review. But he's just sort of fallen under, so it's coming to ZVA.
The sign that you've got in place now that has space for other individual units, I mean, the Sweet Cathies, obviously they've moved downtown, so you could put four signs where they are.
That's correct. The Sweet Cathy sign was, she took 3,000 square feet and she wanted more signage. So we gave a temporary, a little more signage and we put her on top there. But that's, if you look at the, that's good enough for four, for tenants.
So that'll give you 16 on that.
Correct, eight and eight.
Yeah.
And if you rent 3,000, you get the double sign.
Yeah. And then the other building, just for my own edification, the other building you're going to put up is situated on the site such that you won't need this type of a sign. You could have individual signage.
The signage in that building will be on the building itself and not part of this sign.
And this one right now, he's got, the businesses have signs on their buildings. But you're going at such a speed and there's arms, topography, that it's just, it really is a matter of topography. So that's what the zoning board is supposed to look at, is there hardship created by topography or speed or circumstances out of his control?
When I bought the property, there was a drawback, couple of drawbacks. And some good points. First, the good points were Lols and Home Depot was moving in, which never happened. So that went negative. And then we had that berm, that when you came down toward Plymouth, you didn't see the area until you were on top of it. And then of course, the transportation department said, there's no driveways from 25, so we had to go in off Eaton Road. So, but it's still working out. But we need, we need to get, that sign is, we try to keep it the smallest possible. And I think it came nice and it doesn't look too, too large in the site.
And now, I mean, the posts you've got look nice and they match the building. I guess just one more, just again, from my own education, on the building is that you're sort of creating 1,500 square foot spaces. Do you wait for the tenant to come in and then you outfit it on the inside to their?
Yes. It's a show right now. We have a doctor coming in.
Yeah.
And now we are building out his unit.
Okay. Plumbing, electric.
Right. 1,500 now became four offices. Even though all the head door and back is blocked off and that is the X-ray room. So, you know, the space can work, okay? But we've seen that 1,500 square feet is the size, which I basically had idea that I have buildings other places, but that's, that's what, right now, that's what's rented.
Yeah. It's a nice flex building. Make it work different ways. Any other questions?
Did the State Department of Transportation require you to leave the berm undisturbed?
Undisturbed, we could cut it, clean it elevation wise. They didn't want to cut down too much.
So you cut it as much as you could?
Correct. I mean, you have utility poles on that, so you have a problem, if you cut it down, now you, you have a problem when you come to that utility pole, what are you going to do about it? And they were not hard to work with, but they were rigid about what they wanted us to do.
Just a point of order. Miriam, if, if the rules have changed now, a freestanding sign or master sign or directory sign is allowable by site plan review, I'm just wondering why we need variance?
Okay, because they've already installed the sign, so the sign's already up. So, and, and, do you know the date you erected the sign?
It was before, I think, the plant, the town meeting.
It was before town meeting, so I just thought it made more sense to go through the variance board because at that time, it wasn't conforming with the ordinance.
We're caught between the advertisement of the article and the town meeting itself.
So in other words, what complicated it is that the sign's already erected. Now, if the variance is denied, then, you know, he'd have to take that down. But if he came to me today and said, I'd like to put this sign up, then I would send it to planning board.
So if we denied the variance tonight?
Right.
He could still go to the planning board and ask for a sign?
Yeah, except that it's already up, so that's why I think it should go to zoning board because it's already, it's already up, so he's asking for variance.
Are you saying the sign isn't compliance with the new ordinance?
Oh, no, it could comply with the new ordinance. It has to go through planning board.
But the sign physically complies with?
Right, but it doesn't, at the time that he installed it, it didn't comply with our zoning ordinance. Because you can't go larger than 100 square feet. And he's 126, or 128, so he's 28 square feet over.
But he's in compliance now with what is now the ordinance?
Well, now it's done case by case, so planning board would have to make that decision. I don't have a, we don't have a hard and fast number for planning board. So it'd be planning board's determination.
I mean, basically, he either needs a variance from us.
Right.
Or a site plan approval from the.
From the planning board. And since it's already up and the timing of it, that should be zoning board adjustment.
Look at it this way, you got, you got two paths here, you know? If you don't, if you're not successful here, you can, you can go there.
Well, we hope we got successful. I was the chairman of the zoning board for five years. I know you guys get paid well for this.
You have my deepest sympathy.
And I've heard all the stories, so, but this was not something done on a stake or whatever. We were under the gun.
Right. Right, and they've worked with us, they've come before us and, you know, we were, we were working and discussing. It was just a matter of, how can this work to help?
Anything else, you men? You all set? Any other questions from the board?
Just another, so basically the size is approved at site plan review?
Yes, starting at the town meeting, March 15th or whatever the date was, right. Now it can be approved at site plan review.
Okay. And there's no constraint to size?
No, there's no constraint to size, so they just view it case by case. So in this circumstance, they would be looking at the speed of the road, the setback, the berm.
Okay.
You know, they're just, because I didn't want to put some kind of number and then all of a sudden it doesn't work. So they're just supposed to look at it case by case and see what the situation is, what's the setback and.
It just sounds to me like it would be better dealt with at the planning board level, you know, zoning board.
And it would be if he came today, but the sign's already up, so, and the sign went up before.
Well, he's, he's in violation.
Right.
Okay. But a trip to the, to the planning board could resolve that. I mean, we're not going to throw him in jail, but, but that would, that would resolve the issue. I think personally, I think it's a planning issue and not a zoning issue. That's, that's my.
Okay, I mean, either way, but, you know, it's just the 28-foot variance, we could take care of it tonight, but.
A variance is a significant tool. It's a deeded, it's a deeded right. It's something that follows the deed. It's significant. I think we should be very careful about doing it.
Right, you want to be very, very careful with signs because you don't want to create a precedent. However, in this circumstance, I think he's got enough topographic features that really justify it.
Let me, the site plan approval, you initially got from the planning board was for all three buildings.
Correct.
So you, so building was, building A is the unbuilt one?
Correct.
That one you can just build through the pulling of a building permit?
That's right. Approved on that building through a site plan that was approved on initial. We showed them all the three buildings. We went for everything that, we didn't break it apart. We didn't phase it in.
Okay. And there's a plan, there's a sign shown on that plan?
Correct, and that's where that sign is today.
And that complied with the 100 square foot?
Right, that complied with the 100 square foot. And at that time, you know, I'll be honest, at that time, planning board didn't look at, somebody would show this as their sign, but they didn't specifically review the sign. They would just say, meet the sign ordinance. So then the person would come in separately to go get that sign approved, get a sign permit. Now, if somebody wants to exceed the 100 square feet, then they get their sign approved at the same time as site plan review.
Mayor, could, since this B and C there, could he have two 100-foot signs technically? Because it's two buildings.
Oh, well, it's one sign per parcel.
Per parcel.
So that's the problem. Because you have like Hatch Plaza also, that you have multiple buildings and it's on one parcel. And if it was sign per building, our business would be in better shape, but it's one sign per parcel.
Okay.
Yeah, maximum number of signs per lot. One.
Is that a subdivisible lot?
Yeah. Sure, how many acres is that?
About four acres.
Four acres, so minimum lot size is one acre, if you have the right percentage.
Six hundred feet.
It just, the ordinance prior to town meeting didn't treat the directory sign any different. And it really should. The directory sign, if you're going to be advertising a number of businesses, you shouldn't have to make a sign requirement as if it was just one. So that's a hardship.
Any other board questions? Anyone from the audience have any questions, comments, concerns?
So technically, I think you could go out and get individual signs from one of those places now, have it 100 square feet?
For each one?
Our sign ordinance says one per lot.
Per lot, okay.
Yeah. But if each one was subdivided, like let's say it was condominium, then yes.
Yeah. Sorry.
I've got, I've got just one question. I guess, is there any more lights going to be added to the sign? The existing sign is the new sign, the way in standard.
That's the one in place right now, yes.
I just, the lighting is all within the sign, isn't it, Joe?
Yes.
It's, no spotlights on that?
No. All, the first sign, we had to put spotlights on it from the ground, but this sign has internal lighting.
Are you in a butter?
Yes, we, I'm sorry, my name is John Nelson. We're directly above the property. At 815 Kennyville.
You're just, just past the building?
Yes, that's right.
With the white, you've got the white fence between?
It's actually Jill's fence.
Yes, we're on the other side.
Yeah, Frank Miller. I stand in support of granting a variance in this rather unique situation where a business is caught between old ordinances and a new one. And although the process may not be as streamlined as we'd like, given the conditions and the configuration, the intent of trying to comply with our ordinance as they stand now, and the fact that the business and the sign that's there is a reasonably signed, it looks nice, I think we should just move forward. I believe it's in keeping with the intent of our ordinance and may not be, meet your, the idea of a variance, but we're actually trying to correct something that's gone through a change of our ordinance. I think we should just approve it.
Just curious, have there been other situations similar to this where you've had to grant enlargement of, or approval of a sign that goes beyond variance in the past? Is this unusual situation or has this happened before? As the board?
Well, I mean, the Hanaford sign came in a little bit ago when Sherwin-Williams, before Sherwin-Williams came in.
Yeah, right, Hatch Plaza, right.
And then, wasn't the Wilson Tire sign?
Yeah, you're right, you're right. Wilson Tire and then Hatch Plaza. Yeah. And Wilson Tire, I think, was just the setback.
The setback, yeah.
It was the setback for Wilson Tire. And then Hatch Plaza was the same thing where you have, you have Hanafords and Marshalls and you have all the little shops and you have the directory sign. And that's one where, I think it might actually be three lots, it's not just one. And Mr. Menthie's is all, they're all, businesses are in one. So Hatch Plaza, they could have three signs because it's three lots. But again, what we're trying to do from a planning standpoint is encourage the directory sign because it, it looks much better aesthetically to just have it all in one. And hopefully it's easier for people to see too. They just have, you have a, a name of your center and then you can put the little businesses below it.
So there haven't been variances like this before?
Well, the Hatch Plaza, we want to include that because they needed more signage to increase their square footage. So Hatch Plaza, yes, and then.
It seems like if it's been done before, you know, why wouldn't you do it now? I'm in, I'm in favor of what he's asking for.
I mean, you always need to look at variances on a case by case basis. Sure. As Dick Piper said, you know, variances are kind of serious issues.
Yeah.
And you always have to sort of be careful about sort of what you do and how you do it and those kinds of things. I mean, just the other, the other sign that comes to mind is the one for the health complex up by Walmart.
Oh, right, Boulder Point.
Boulder Point, they had a setback issue, I think it was.
It has come back where, where people can abuse the sign ordinance and they say, I want a bigger sign because I want a bigger sign.
Right.
So, in that circumstance, that doesn't warrant a variance because there's no hardship. So typically when you're looking for hardship, you're looking for a unique situation or something with topography and the directory and having a number of businesses, I think, falls under that circumstance.
And I, I think the other thing is, this is part of the corridor study that we did a number of years ago on Route 25. And one of those issues was the fact that if every one of those businesses put up their legal sized sign, you would have an attractive nuisance. You'd have problems with people seeing what they're going, what they're doing. And so this was, this ordinance we passed was an outcome of the fact that, working with the businesses and trying to get something that's conformal, attractive, and it's not intrusive to the fact that it's not so big, that it makes the place look stupid and like some of these other places down south. And it, so I think that's why they. And it, so I think that's why they looked at allowing the site plan, planning board through site plan process to look at each particular sighting of the building and the sign, to see whether or not it would meet conformly, and look nice, and still be effective means of advertisement for business. And this particular event here is just an administrator caught between one set of ordinances and another set of ordinances. I think we just ought to move forward, because I don't believe another event would come through needing another variance for a sign, because it won't even get here.
Any other comments from the audience? Any other board questions, comments? All right, let's sort of bring it to the board for discussion. I guess I'll just, I'll start off. I mean, I think the point that Dick Piper makes as well, I mean, it's, in, in an ideal world, if this was sort of maybe before the planning board, that probably would be the best, the best venue, but there is sort of this, kind of the rock and the hard place, and the timing of when the sign was put up, and to sort of dealing with it and administrative void. But, I mean, I think it might be appropriate for the decision to at least take note of the fact or reference that, you know, the planning board now has that, sort of that authority to deal with directory type signs, just so we don't get caught in a situation where someone else comes in and says, "Well, you know, I only have two businesses here, but I want, you know, I want 128 square feet," kind of thing. I mean, that's, that's a road that, I think, per the corridor study, you know, we don't want to go down there.
Well, the other, the other side of that coin is, is that through the site plan review process, the planning board would address issues of the lights in the sign, and they'd make sure that the lights were proper, and, I mean, they, they like talk about the dark sky, and downlighting, and things of that nature, and that's why, that's why we go there for that. So that's, and tonight, we'll be approving this sign, and, and I like the sign. I've seen the sign, I have no issues with the sign. It's just the procedure and that's all.
Any other discussion, comments?
I think he has a unique situation. The planning board approved him to build these three buildings, what is it, 14 units? And the circumstances are that even though it'd be more efficient for him to have larger businesses, the reality is that smaller businesses really need this opportunity, and they're, they're obviously not getting enough signage so that people can see them. And I just think it's, it's a unique hardship situation.
I agree. I, I know I've been by there several times, and it was very hard with the old signs. I was looking for the quilt shop, trying to see what was in there because of that berm, and it's such a busy section of road. You're trying to pay attention to the road, and then try to look at the sign at the same time. I like the new sign, and I think it's, it was a hardship with that berm.
If there's no other comments right now, Miriam had sort of laid out three sort of draft findings of fact, and we'll just talk about those real quick, and see if we have any other additions or changes to those. Number one, Mr. Memphis, property owner desires a freestanding directory sign for 14 businesses. Sort of a fact. At the time, the zoning ordinance didn't treat directory signs slash multiple business signs differently from a single business sign. Maximum square footage permitted for a freestanding sign in this zone is 100 square feet. Number three, Mr. Memphis needs two variances in order to keep his sign at its present Other findings of fact, because we sort of talked about the berm. Location of the berm creates, yes, a visual barrier to the businesses. The location of the berm creates a visual barrier to the, to the business, to the buildings.
Okay.
I think that, that the building is located at a point on the highway where the speed limit increases, and that causes people to drive by the building faster in terms of
Any other findings of fact that anyone wants to add? All right, let's move into discussion of the variance criteria. Number one, granting the variance will not diminish the value of surrounding properties. True or false?
True.
True? That's unanimous. The variance will not be contrary to the public interest?
True.
True? True. That's unanimous. Denial of the variance would result in unnecessary hardship to the applicant upon proof that a) the zoning restriction as applied to the applicant's property interferes with the applicant's reasonable use of the property, considering the unique setting of the property and its environment. True or false?
True.
True, that's sort of tied back to the berm and everything. B, no fair and substantial relationship exists between the general purposes of the zoning ordinance and the specific restriction on the property. True or false?
True.
True? It's unanimous. C, the variance would not injure the public or private rights of others. True or false?
It's true.
Granted the variance would do substantial justice?
True.
True? True? Unanimous there? And number five, use will not be contrary to the spirit and intent of the ordinance.
True.
True?
True.
All right, so that was true, all, through all of those. Anyone want to make a motion?
I'll move around the variance.
Second?
To increase the size from 100 to 128 square feet.
And then also from the 200 to the 256.
The 200 to 256.
All right, and that was the second. Any other discussion on this? Fall in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? You all set?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good night.
Miriam, anything else? Did you happen to go to the planning conference?
Yeah, we went to the planning conference. Robin represented the zoning board. So next year, I hope more of you guys will come, but, but also, I know that we were first one. And there is a change that they're looking at with zoning board, right, Robin? They're looking at adding one more criteria.
Just kind of change in some of the verbiage on the criteria.
On the criteria.
Oh, yeah.
I think right now, it's, it went through the House, and now it's going to go through the Senate, is that...
I think that's where it is, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. So there might, we might have to look at a change to our variance criteria, but I'll, I'll keep you updated on that when that happens. But otherwise, it was a very good conference, had a lot of good information, they gave legal updates, they covered a lot of the bases.
A lot of people there.
Yeah, and a lot of food.
That's the one down in Manchester, yes.
Yeah, Manchester, Red, they gave us like breakfast, lunch, and then snaps.
Just on the, on the issue of signs, with the new building up at Boulder Point, have they had any discussion with you? Are they going to be coming in for another sign, or what do you, any sense on that?
Are we talking about the hospital building going up?
Yeah.
Is that a separate lot?
I would, yes. It is a separate lot.
Yeah, it's a separate lot.
So they've got a separate sign for one, right?
Right.
Will look better. His attitude...
Brian Young, who was the original developer, his thought was to have the Boulder Point sign at the bottom, it's on 10 miles, and then identify it and let people know it's called Boulder, Boulder Point Place, right?
Yes.
And then, and then try to encourage people to put the signage up on top of the hill, but...
That would be ideal, but, yeah.
Yeah, so I'm not exactly sure, but at the top of the hill now, he does have his own signage, you know, once you get there. And that might be another one of those that if it exceeds the 100 square feet, then it would go to site plan review, planning board. It's just, this was just one that slid in between.
Is that Director Supply Building going up there, too?
There's an application, isn't there?
It's not like an official application yet, so it's, it's being discussed, being discussed. I think they had a preliminary, right? Application, it's been discussed.
Any other business? Any other comments from the audience? I should do a adjournment. All taken?
And just a heads up for next meeting, we're looking at an application that's going to be for the family accessory dwelling. So that also was one of our new amendments, that we allow a person's, you know, mother-in-law or in-law to come live with them.
Apartment, the garage.
A mother-in-law apartment. So we're going to get one of those, I think. We got the call, and it's just a matter of if he gets the application and not your time.
You're going to get one of those?
Get a mother-in-law.
I don't have a mother-in-law, so...
You can get a top one.
I do, I do, I don't want to bump, make you... Put it in the garage.